Good evening, everybody. My name is Andrew Shepherd, Chair of the Planning Board, and I call this meeting your at 6:31 PM. I'd like to have a roll call of all the board members present. Please say your name for the record.
Lance McNally, Associate.
Carol Hopps is present.
Brett King, present.
Robert Theron, present.
And Andrew Shepherd, present.
Uh, just letting you guys know you have a camera off still.
Right. Hear you hardly.
Harley, I'm worried TCAM is trying to silence you.
Oh, no. Good. Okay, guys, your, uh, camera.
Still can't hear you.
Your camera. Please unmute your video.
Do you want to try, maybe hardly try, you know, if you have a microphone that works there?
Can you hear me?
Not on mute, are you hardly?
Uh, no, I'm not on mute. Uh, come, come, you can't hear me. Uh.
Hmm. Harley, maybe you want to try logging off again and try it back on?
All right, I'll try that.
It seems like it, that you may try that. We can't hear a thing if you say, there you go. So I guess for the record, we did have hardly on, and we expect to have hardly on, and he is a member of the. Um, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, in this book of liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank all of our veterans, those currently serving here and abroad, their families, and those who contribute their time to public service. We owe them our gratitude. This meeting is being recorded and will be uploaded to the Town of Town's YouTube channel. I do not have any additions or deletions tonight. So I, we can go right to 1.5, which we discuss and approve draft minutes from November 3rd. Uh, did you guys have a chance to review? Thoughts?
I could.
Yeah, okay. Ask them over, Carol. Good. Brett, do you have a chance? Are you looking?
Uh, not really, no.
Okay. Um, I feel comfortable with them. Lance, I know you weren't there, but if you're ready, you're welcome to contribute, I think.
I didn't see anything.
Yeah.
Merit.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the, the minutes from November 3rd.
I so move.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Can you hear me?
So at six and two minutes.
That's Harley again.
Harley, can we hear you?
Uh, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
No, it's taken to you.
Andrew, can you hear me?
He's talking now. It even lit up green. His, uh.
Yeah.
Try talking, honey.
Laurie, can you say something?
I, I am saying something. Can you hear me?
Okay, we can. So, all right, so you're coming through. So the problem is on your end, hardly.
Dixon, I'll try. I'll leave. I'll keep trying.
Okay, um, Andrew?
Yes, Laurie.
But I just mentioned to you that you guys are not showing. It's a black screen with planning board on it, rather than, your video is not working, is what I'm saying.
That, yeah, I just turned on the video. I could've shut off on the computer.
Okay.
There you go. There you go. You're on now. Okay?
Thank you, Laurie. That would have been very boring for everyone at home. Okay.
They probably would have dialed, you know, left the meeting like in five minutes or so.
They could have. They could have. Be the lowest YouTube watch count for the year. Uh, thank you, Laurie. Um, all right, it is now 6:35. I'd like to, um, to have item 2.1, A and R review, 198 North End Road, to create two lots. We have, is it Jason?
Yes.
We have Jason here from Gillison Roy. Um, would you mind giving us just a brief overview?
Sure, no problem. Um, I'm Kate and I're representing for M and K, um, Grandview Farm LLC. And the purpose of the A and R plan is to create lot 6 and then lot 7. Um, both lots have a minimum frontage and the area requirements. They're pretty straightforward lots.
Yeah, plans are right here. If anyone wants to take a look, it is in the portal as well.
And I assume, Beth, that you've gone through the checklist?
I was gonna put it up on the board.
And are there any waivers?
No.
Gosh, usually we have one waiver at least that has to do with scale.
Yeah, it should be, what did I put in there? From 1 to 40, right? But you don't have to waive it. I mean, it, it doesn't say explicitly have to vote to waive it.
Okay.
Yeah, not in the evaluation.
Would anybody else like to take a look?
I've seen it.
Right here, I said it.
Yeah, I reviewed it as well. All right. Would like to entertain a motion to approve the A and R application?
I so move that we approve the applicant's plan as presented.
And I'll second it.
Okay. Beth, are you okay with that, that motion language?
See, I would say, um, I'm taking a motion to endorse the A and R and, um, basically cite the plan, of land 17, 198 North End Road, Townsend, uh, cite the title.
It is. So we've said by that?
Exactly.
Okay.
And I'll second it as.
Thank you.
That's best.
Okay, excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Can you hear me now? Harley, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you hardly.
Thank you. Sorry about the problem.
That's okay. You're loud and clear. Harley, we, we have just voted to approve the A and R plans. I know this is, uh, poor form for me as a chair, but do you have any thoughts or opinions on the A and R that we just approved?
No, I'm, if you guys approved it, uh, I think everything is all set.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Harley.
Sign it. I'll sign, and you can sign the A and R for you, and then, um, Jason can get going.
Sure. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you.
Jason said he wanted to stay for the whole meeting.
We changed to lot 6 and lot 7.
From 5A and 5B.
Yeah, because we can't use letters and, yeah. We can do the rest of them later.
All right.
I think it's probably easier. They just come up and.
Here, you guys come around.
Laurie is no longer having video.
She might have felt obliged when no one could see all of us.
Yeah. Mike, they can't sign it from where I'm at. So should I, Beth, should I come in sometime this week and sign it?
I don't think you'll need to, hardly.
Yeah.
I think we're okay.
Yeah, majority of the board has signed, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you all. Yep.
Yeah. Oh, you got it.
Thank you very much, Harold. Thank you. Have a great evening, everybody.
Okay, thank you. Nice talking with you.
So that is, that was 2.1. Um, and because it's not a public hearing, we can hear 6:45, right? 6:45 PM. So, Joe, Mr. Boyle, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, everybody. Got a couple things to talk to you about tonight. Um, the first one is the, uh, is the Economic Development Project. I'm afraid I don't come to you with very good news tonight. I haven't, uh, there, I haven't made progress on, uh, the project since we last spoke about it. As I went back after our conversation, I, um, I, I realized that while I had a good idea of what it was that you didn't want from last time, I didn't come away from that with a good idea of what it was you did want. Um, and the instructions and my attempts to recreate the trail back at the office have run into a couple of barriers. One of which is that Karen Chapman is no longer with us at the MRPC. And so I'm unable to, and, and so I don't have access to whatever feedback was given to her. I found, I have the email in which sees she sent three options for guidebooks, uh, to the town, and I don't have any feedback, uh, any of the responses on that or feedback or have access to it. There is a limited amount of time left in this year, and I thought, I wanted to have a conversation about going forward on this, completing the project satisfactory, satisfactorily, the timeline for how that's going to, uh, be, uh, and, and possibly into the new, eh, into the new year and continuing in the new year with a Phase 2 of the project. If we come to the conclusion that what you're looking for, uh, out of this project, uh, out of this, uh, project isn't something that, uh, we can, I can do in a, an effective manner, uh, by the end of the contract on December 31st, um, what would be a, uh, what would be a Phase 1 of, to, of a complete project that we then go on to finish in the next year. So I think what I could really use is a working session. I could come into town for that. Um, I recall us speaking about this, Mr. Chairman, um, last time, and you seem to be more or less the man with the plan.
Ah, what a compliment.
So, um, I was thinking if I, I, and there is also, topic two I wanted to talk about tonight was the, uh, compliance, uh, get it, getting the compliance application. I was hoping it would be possible for me to come in, uh, one day and, uh, do work there at Townsend Town Hall to, um, nail down my understanding of this, go over some documents, um, and, uh, uh, you know, work, work on this project for an hour or so, and then also get, uh, uh, be, work in person on, uh, getting that application in.
Uh, I, one question, just, uh, you've mentioned that, uh, we have a budget for this year and next year. If we don't use up this year's budget, does it, does the hours carry over to next year?
Yeah. We do not have a budget for next year. We would have to work on that. We'd be, have to talk about, uh, an, uh, an additional DLTA. And, uh, as, uh, for next year, as well as, um, we, as well as us figuring out what to do in the interim, uh, between the two phases, if, uh, if it comes to that. Um, in terms of the budget, um, the MBTA community, the, the MBTA Communities Act project was also done on DLTA. And I can, I, I can guarantee you, and basically, this project has suffered at the hands of that one in terms of the hours. That took, there was more, that, that took a lot more than we guessed at the beginning of the year for what is going to be for a project, and, uh, that did, I'm, I'm afraid that did, did eat up a lot of my town, a, a lot of my towns in time. I have cer, I'm, and I acknowledge I have not helped the prob, the, the problem over the past month as I've been, uh, finishing out other communities, MBTA projects, and other things happening at the, at the MRPC. But we were kind of behind the eight ball when I took over this project and spoke to you last time, and probably should have been more real, realistic and had a conversation like this, uh, then.
Okay. Um, so we don't necessarily know the extent that it could continue into the next year or a budget. We don't necessarily know how many, I guess you don't have a good feel for what we're asking for, to know how many hours you can put towards it towards the end of the year. Do you have time towards the end of the year, depending on what we talked about for scale and scope?
Yes, we feel, yes, I, yes, there is sufficient, eh, space there for something. Okay, that I, I can get you something towards what you wanted, uh, a document, a pamphlet document or something like that. Or if it was more ambitious than that, well, I, a first draft of something that you were, uh, of, is something bigger and more ambitious that, uh, that we were talking about.
Okay.
Um, how many, how many much funds are still available from this year's budget?
That isn't, that isn't really a question I can ask. We, it's, this is DLTA. DLTA is tracked as DLTA. One big DLTA thing, and that's all the DLTA projects and in all of the different towns. So broadly, uh, we have eaten up a lot of DL, a, a, a lot of DLTA and a lot, particularly MBTA Communities, uh, work. And, and that's where we are.
Well, I, I recognize that, that we did. It was an exhaustive exercise, and we think we did a very comprehensive job. My concern here right now is should we just put this on hold because of the budget question?
I would, I would say let's, let's go forward with it this year.
Yeah, I, I think we can work through that. I, this has nothing to do with council budget, to my knowledge. This has everything to do with the Monetary Regional Planning Commission's.
I say we go forward and get what we can, um, get done this year.
Explain that to me.
All right. Laurie has her hand up. I'd like to, Laurie, former Chair of Planning Board and our Liaison of the Select Board.
And troublemaker.
Well, I don't know about that, but, um, June 24th, we had the public forum for this economical, economic grant. And there was a pretty detailed synopsis of the five or six people that met. And I guess my suggestion would be, is if you could get those people to, I mean, I don't know what you're going to find at Town Hall by, by coming into Town Hall, but the, uh, MRPC has the synopsis, because Tracy did it. So it's somewhere in Karen's and Tracy's documents, as well as I, I think, um, Beth would have it. And the, and I believe she has the list of the people who attended that day and spent two plus hours in discussion, and there was some really good discussion. Um, and if Beth doesn't have the list, I can give you the people who were there. Karen and Tracy were two of them. I was another one. There was, um, Sulicio and Patrick, who used to be on our board. This, this actually stemmed from, came from his idea to get Karen on to get, or, I, I forget who, what her name was, Erin maybe before, but that's how we got the grant, because of Patrick. And then there was, and I'm gonna say his name wrong, so I'm not gonna, he's an engineer that serves on, uh, zoning board right now. So just those few people, I think maybe if they got to, they could get together with anybody else who wants to on planning, with Joe, and Joe reading that synopsis, they could then take off from there. That would be my suggestion, because that's work that's already been done. You'll have the people who came up with those decisions. You'll have people from Planning Board, and then you can move forward with what you might be able to do, because there was lots of ideas that came out of that. And basically, a lot of it had to do with, uh, branding and, um, tourism being part of it and somehow promoting Townsend. Yeah, it's a growth area. So that's my suggestion. Take it for what it's worth.
Thank you.
Um, Joe, I, that, I mean, that's, uh, I don't think Laurie's direction sounds totally unreasonable. I, in terms of, I guess I'd open it up to the rest of the board for what we would want from the Economic Development, um, DLTA for the end of the year, but I, I would think if some level of summary from the ser, the survey results of 50 people that I did see at the portal, um, you know, the, the synopsis of qual, extensive qualitative discussions that Beth may be able to get you or may have in her email. This is the survey, correct? So maybe, Joe, if you can, it sounds like the only loose end would be, you know, the details from that June event for the qualitative side. But maybe if you could put all that stuff together, um, into a, I don't know, medium-sized memo of sorts, just kind of summarizes everything. And I would think that would be satisfactory.
Um, I, so, I, I, merely summarizing the work that's, that's already been done, I, yes, I can certainly do that. I feel like, though, that isn't, that, that wouldn't complete the contract. There was that, there, that there's a further, this further, at one time it was a development guide, and now it's more of a marketing material, that's some sort of additional, um, something is supposed, is meant to come out of this.
Maybe I'm wrong, but I see those as two different things. I thought there was the economic development, and then there was, uh, was that all included?
I think it's more, of course, it's a different animal, but, um, I would say if there's some way to incorporate the, the marketing survey data into.
An implementation plan.
Yeah, a usable thing.
Oh.
That's really the goal.
I also felt like Joe was referencing the permitting guidebook.
Yeah.
And was that part of the Economic Development Grant, DLTA, or was that separate, do you know?
It was, it was part of an evolution of things, yeah. So it, it was discussed later on, and, uh, the board had seen a couple of examples and, um, kind of selected a couple that they liked. Um, but it was never really definitively decided upon. But I think, you know, I still think it's a really good thing to have. I mean, it can be a, a new resident book. It can be, you know, if it could incorporate these market survey data somehow and make it tangible and usable for the community, I guess that would be the goal, you know?
Okay. So, based on what I just heard, what about the production of some sort of useful for the community document like that, um, as a DLTA project next year, informed by, uh, product that I create this year, a summary of the survey results, uh, so, um, uh, uh, description of the, uh, of the synopsis of the June meeting, and those two informing an implementation plan to direct next year, to direct a D, a potential DLTA project to create a, a document over the course of 2026.
You don't want to mix up like the LTA grants. That's, uh, that's the problem, because we have other ideas.
True. Um, so I think, I don't know, sure if you can hear what Beth is saying, but I, I do think, uh, her and Karen have both, uh, have a short list of things that we, rate our priorities for 2026 DLTA grants.
Uh-huh. That I'd like to try to get done as much as we can this year.
Sure.
In terms of, you know, an implementation plan.
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't want to spend.
Okay. Okay, so that info, I'll focus on that. I'll focus on an implementation plan. Familiarize myself more with that, uh, with, 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 with the the, the synopsis of the June, of the June event to inform the implementation plan. Okay. Okay. I think I'm getting, I, I'm getting my arms around a, 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 a work product that I can, I can get you by the end of the year.
And then I would think, separate to that, sounds like you coming into Town Hall, potentially working with Beth or someone in the Land Use Office about submitting the compliance application?
Um, yeah, although, uh, I was off, I was thinking it would make sense to do that because, if I was coming in anyway, but if I'm not, um, that's easy enough to do actually over a, a Teams call or Zoom call or something. Or even, or even, or even over a phone call. Um, we did, we did it over the phone, didn't we, Mr. Chairman? Yeah. So, so, yeah, that, uh, it, it, it isn't very much value added for me to come into, to come in just for that.
Joe, um, anywhere in this, uh, program, are, are we integrating anything to do with our state parks in the town with this, uh, impact or, or what?
Implementation plan? Um, well, I, I would think that, uh, any kind of, um, marketing product for Townsend would have to have a certain level of focus on open space and on your greatest open spa, uh, space resources.
Okay. Um.
We have the town.
I would think that would be almost as important as the, you know, the Main Street, West Main Street Historic District, Antiquing District.
Right.
That's one, as a real core defining, um, organizing, um, portion, eh, e, element of what it would be.
One of the other, um, things that you might want to incorporate is speaking with cemetery parks, because they control a lot of the town parks, and they can probably give you some input into this as well.
Yeah, parks and open space, uh, yeah.
Cemetery and parks.
Cemetery and parks and so, and cemetery and yeah. That would especially be important, uh, get a sense of the real iconic, uh, landscapes or features. That, 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 that would fit well into, in, into this sort of marketing. Um, this is also going to have to tie into the, uh, the trails grants.
I have one more comment. Um, I'm, happen to be, uh, Commissioner of Cemetery and Parks.
Oh.
And one of the conversations or the things that we're considering there is, uh, over the course of the last four decades, uh, the community has lost its swimming resources. Um, and so there are only two areas in town where people can swim in natural water. Um, and so from the perspective of cemetery parks, um, we'd like to change the course on that and implement or see how we can, through grants or whatever, uh, improve that situation. And two of the existing places where swimming is available are, are being threatened right now, so, um, that I think is something that is a, a part of the community that should be recovered. Anyway, my opinion.
Uh, does anybody else have any questions or comments for Joe on this matter? Joe, do you have any questions or comments for us? Do you feel like you have a slightly better?
Yeah, I feel like, yes, I have a slightly better. I have a way of going forward. Beth, um, I will be getting back in touch with you as, uh, as my town contact, uh, uh, on, on this more. I think that it'll be, it'll, eh, the, the work portion of this, I'll be sending you stuff for review to make sure, to, 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 eh, eh, make sure that I'm on the right path.
We have a summary and a motion in the board that we would like to, you know, see what we'd like to see by December 31st, um, specific motion and some sort of specific.
Um, so, that seems reasonable. So, Joe, what Beth is asking for is for the board to put together just a motion that's kind of a clear outline of what we're looking for from you?
If you'd like. Sure.
Yeah.
Kind of short, so, yeah.
So, um, um, let's just, this is just draft language, and you guys can brainstorm here, but, um, move to have MRPC, um, uh, what would be the right word, finish.
What about develop an implementation plan based upon the previous, um, work and correspondence by December the 31st of this year?
I'm okay with that. Anybody else have comments? Joe, do you have comments?
Uh, I would say to expand the, the, the scope of that to, uh, uh, because the implementation plan is one of, uh, three items to, uh, produce a, um, final document which incorporates, uh, the survey, an analysis of the survey results, a, uh, synopsis of the, uh, June event and conclusions, and an implementation plan.
Sounds good. Okay. Let's see, let me, I'm gonna make the first attempt. Let's see, let me, I'm gonna make the first attempt. So move, I move to have M R P C uh, develop an implementation plan based on previous work and correspondence, including survey results, June information session and June information session by the end of this year, that?
It sounds good.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right, I've moved it.
I second.
Robert second.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, there you have it. That'll get it. Yeah, okay. Good. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Um, Beth, uh, if you want to let Karen know, uh, I think it looks like we're ready on the documents and uh, uh, if he's got some time uh, to block out Wednesday, Thursday, Friday this week, um, I you know, I think we can knock it out.
Excellent.
Great.
Um, I Beth, I sent you the link and going back through my emails, you have the link to the uh, to the application. Don't you? That I started?
She said yes.
Yep.
Yes, okay, excellent. So, okay, so, yeah, I will. All right, so the three of us will have to stay in the loop on all of that. All right, I'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. Yes, you all too. Good night.
Good night. Okay. The next item in business two point three, appoint a planning board member to the community preservation committee. Uh, I understand potentially some interest from Lance.
Yes.
Excellent. I expressed interest at a previous meeting, but I'm also comfortable with Lance's interest and willingness to serve.
Um, just so the board knows, the cemetery parks nominate me as well. So I think we got some.
No double dipping tonight there, Ron.
No.
So. Uh, does anybody have any other interests, whether Hartley, Carol or Brett?
So I nominate Lance.
Okay, second?
I'll second it.
Carol seconds? All those in favor?
Hi.
Excellent. You guys have it. Lance will be our appointee.
Congratulations, Lance.
Thank you.
I'll see you though. So two point four is reviewed, discuss the Route one nineteen corridor analysis. This is, I think, one we did receive the final plan that's in the portal. Um, I did have some updates as well. I did some work. I reached out to I talked to Beth a little bit about this, but reached out to Mike Bustle, who's the current Ashby Fire Chief, but also was a former Ashby interim town administrator when they had the rotary at the end middle-ish of Wheeler Road and Route thirty one done as a tips project with the state. So just talk to him briefly account about kind of their process. And I wanted to share that with you guys. I think the biggest things I took away from talking with uh, Chief Bustle was you know, he had reached out to the state. They actually never had. I don't believe they had an M R P C study done in advance. So he kind of reached out to the state and he's like, hey, I'm the fire chief. I'm the interim town admin. Again, tons of accidents here. Is there anything you can do? So the state did their own studying, which I would expect they would probably have to re-study their own data for whatever we present them. And then the state said, yeah, this is pretty bad. And they got it in line and they got it in the state system for a tips project. And then apparently nothing was happening. It was like six years out for like an estimated wait time. But they were able to identify some federal funding at the time for like rural rural road projects or something like that. So he says that once they were able to access the federal charge of monies, they were able to speak to them. Um, so with that, he shared the contact info of the gentleman he talked to with S D O T. So myself and C C with Beth and Karen reached out to the individual and then we bounced around a little bit and then we we've attempted to reach out to another woman with Mast D O T.
So we really don't. There's more has to be done before we can even think of anything.
Yeah, I think in in my head and what I'm trying to do with including Beth and Karen is is just try to connect with somebody at the state and understand from them, whether they come to a planning board meeting or they send us kind of a description or something. But kind of like what are the funding mechanisms from their view? Would they consider or approve a project like we have here and with the data M R P C has put together?
Right. So can we forward them what we already have?
So we already forwarded it to two different state D O T officials in District Three. Uh, we just haven't had any comments back.
I know, just having reviewed the different options they were presenting.
Sure.
Some of them sounded really great.
Sure.
But then driving by, I'm like, I don't think this is gonna fly.
I I think it's such an early stage. It's it gets really tricky as one could maybe assume from previous experience and past town meetings, like the second you put a drawing on paper, whether it becomes real or not, you know, it it involves itself in people's imaginations. And I don't think we're, even though the M R P C quarter analysis has suggested certain things, I think we're far from any certainty on, one, if there would even be funding or if the state would wish to include it being a state road. And two, what the means of relieving any of the accidents or congestion or anything.
So the next question. Is there anything that can be done in the interim? Because it's gonna take a while before they actually come up with any remedy and implementation.
Now, I don't totally know. In my imagination, from a planning board perspective, I don't know if there's anything we can do in the interim. I think it's a state road with multiple different property owners.
Yeah.
You know, unless you organize a large gathering of them all and have them all agree to put down some sort of independent monies, which I'd struggle to believe.
I think it's going to be very, very difficult. I think previous attempts way back when sure with rotten pepperol involved is it's.
Sure.
Plus, I'm not sure a rotary at the bottom of park did. Um, at the bottom of the hill is a good idea.
Just make sure you keep your insurance up.
Sure. Yeah, I don't. And I don't even think we're at a point like that. I think it's just training if we can get the state like bought in a little bit or just bought in enough to have a conversation and then see what they may say or what they may offer. In my in my thoughts. I don't know, Beth, do you have any comments?
Well, I think um, the presentation, I I mean, if you guys look at the different improvement alternatives as a board and you maybe come up with what you like and what you don't like. And then um, maybe put it out to the community and because you did provide a number of uh, improvement alternatives. Um, so what do you like? What do you not like? What what does the community think about what is proposed here? Um, take the study and just sort of have some discussion on it. And then, I mean, we could even invite uh, representatives from Mast D O T and M R P C. You heard that you offered to help with that too. So, um, Brian, uh, what's the name? Brian Doherty, uh, he came to the presentation. He also offered to to get involved in terms of M R P C helping the town get, you know, this conversation going as well. So you know, do you want to have um, uh, community meeting? I can put together something. I don't know how you want to go forward with the results.
Are there any thoughts or comments from the board, including Hartley on the internet?
I think uh, I think we're at the uh, at the point where, yeah, we can uh, go to the matter of uh, of of funding, but if I could just mention one more thing now, our concept on this, if I didn't quite follow it properly, my apologies, but the idea will be to turn that intersection into a rotary, correct?
I think that was a suggested option.
Okay.
One of several.
That wasn't even a drawing.
Yeah, it wasn't even.
Because that's really yeah. Pepperol, rotten.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, that's not even downtown.
Yeah.
And there would be there there would be, whatever happens is going to involve all three towns because all three towns meet at that point, correct?
I'm not counting this, does it?
I don't think we even touched that spot, Joe.
Kind of so hot.
No, it's primarily where we're focused where the the shopping area and the high school is and the houses there. So I don't know how much input Pepperland towns would actually have. I mean, Pepperland, Groton.
Um, I think that's where in my mind, just getting somebody from the state to engage initially and just seeing what we're, I mean, they're the.
It's a town problem. It's not the other two. Our problem for the other two towns.
I don't even know. I mean, it is technically town problems, but because of the state road, they're pretty restrictive on what anybody can do on their state roads.
Right.
Is it even worth getting the community together? We don't have funding because, I mean, to me, it could be just a opening up a can of worms there.
What about getting uh, have we, do we have input from the highway department and law enforcement?
That's a big question. I did. I know Jim Smith was unable to attend the presentation, but I did send it to him. So I can follow up and get some feedback from Jim. Um, you could do a planning board slash staff meeting, you know, and talk about the the report. Um, he does in the final report, he does put list the funding sources and I know they talked about them during the presentation. So in that hundred and thirty-four page final report, there is funding, um, you know, I options. But, you know, you should figure out how you want to move forward with that.
Because I would think that there would be some collaboration with law enforcement between the towns.
Sure.
Are you still having that one interception?
Yeah.
Lance, I wanna see if you remember. When we were going through veterinary hospital there.
Yes.
We approved a plan subject to confirmation from the Commonwealth on the road cut there.
Mm hmm.
That was never delivered.
Yeah.
So I don't know what we should do about that, but I do think we gotta keep it
because we're not, I don't think we can bring up applications that have come before or we've decided on that are outside of what's been posted agenda item.
Well, I'm really upset because that was a very critical thing that we were looking at.
And I don't wish to uh, diminish your upsetment, if that's the right word. But I just think maybe we ought to talk to Beth about that and you know, come back to it or make an agenda item for a future day, specific to that to that item. I think right now we just try to keep it within the scope of what we publish as an agenda item.
Whatever the board decides.
Yeah, I got no issue with looking at it.
Well, I mean, that was the criteria. Yeah, our approval.
But.
And somehow it was ignored and um, some, so from my opinion, that just contributed to the problem that we're just talking about right now. Um.
Because we have to be careful about the agenda items because of open meeting law and because I was also the fight, I'm on the finance committee and we did have an open meeting law violation because we went off topic from the agenda item. So so we have to be very careful how we.
Which is appropriate. We're talking about the one nineteen corridor.
I think it's related. I think if we get into a discussion about the permit application specifically to that individual, then I think it's your off topic time. Yeah.
All right.
Um, you're trying to.
Thank you for bringing that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we have a very good meeting law, right?
Yeah. You'd be surprised.
We've never had a meeting law violation. We always think you can tell.
So maybe, you know, not not diminishing at all your concern, maybe we can put it on for a future agenda item. Or if Beth has any comments as the admin, she can share with you once we, um, yeah.
I would on the. That'd be a topic on our one of our meetings.
Okay, all right. And Beth has noted that. Um, so I mean, I we don't need to belabor this item too, too long, right? And that I I kind of feel a little similarly to Brett that I would worry. I don't mind and I'm okay with having community input. I just think it's very easy to go around in circles. There's a lot of input, like you, if you just, you could have a probably a three hour meeting about whether a rotary should be in an area that we don't as a town own. And I'm sure you get plenty of opinion.
I I would think it's.
I would think there'd be some engineering done.
Yeah, it needs professional recommendation. Which to me is why I'm more interested at this stage in trying to get the state to comment or have some level of engagement. I think that's.
I mean, they talked the simplest and signage and some line striping.
Yeah, yeah.
To doing a three foot cut on the knoll before the shop was like, are we gonna secure fifty thousand dollars or ten million? You know, that's that ends up being the difference.
Yeah, yeah.
So what we could do is someone could make a motion to um, uh, for the chair to meet with um, Mast D O T or uh, officials that could, you know, on the topic of understanding what the town can do with the corridor analysis that we have. You know, just get that public professional input from the state. So you could go to, you know, have him or him and I work together with the state or something like that. So it doesn't have to come to every meeting. I'll make a motion to have the chair work with the transportation, state transportation uh, officials to uh, uh, to to further uh, guide us on this um, one nineteen corridor analysis.
Very good. You should have done the earlier one.
There's been a motion. Are you second?
I second.
Second. Thank you, early. All those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
All right.
Hi.
Nice.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll keep, we'll keep seeing what we can do with that and where it goes. So two point five is Article Five Stormwater Regulation in support of Chapter eighty-five N D D E S Phase Two Stormwater Management Bylaw, Section one hundred and seventy-five dash thirty-five through one seventy-five dash fifty. So I think um, my brief comments prior to this is that I know Brett has brought up to the board before some interest and some comments on a company to improve the stormwater regulation. And I think that I I think we're actually at a point where we have to functionally review our stormwater regulations for the for something. Is that right?
No, we actually, uh, the board revised them about last April. So they've been recently revised, um, and that's gone through. But what we did get was a notice from EPA that our our town M S four stormwater permit is out of compliance and we need to add more regulations to the post-construction phase to be compliant.
Okay.
So it's kind of a tough one. I don't know what they are yet. We haven't got the meeting set up with the EPA.
Okay.
But that's in progress. We're gonna find out what we're missing.
We will be updating them anyways in some short term, I would imagine.
Yeah, and I don't know whether it's an addition to the regulations or the bylaw, but it's, we are short, um, unfortunately, right now. And we have to find out what that is and I'm sorry, I don't have that yet.
No, we have to wait till we get the new regulations before we review our bylaw.
Sure.
Right.
And and I don't know, Brett, I know you weren't expecting to be at this meeting originally. If you had any thoughts or chance to or comments or.
No, I I hadn't. I was I was supposed to be in California, so I haven't had time to review. But I think we should look at it as a whole. If we have to look at them for that anyways, we might as well just review all of them.
When do you expect we would know that?
Uh, well, I don't. I have to set up a meeting with the EPA and unfortunately, um, I'm waiting to do that. I'm working with Nelson, the county administrator. All of this came about unfortunately, so the land use coordinator left that position. And um, when that position was vacant, her email was um, wasn't followed. And this apparently the EPA was trying to get ahold of us to let us know that we needed these two uh, well, these updates to our bylaws to stay compliant for this year of the permit, the count permit. So it was kind of lost in the fray unfortunately, and that position hasn't been filled. So we're scrambling to try to get us back in compliance.
Is there a deadline that we have to do anything?
Not to my knowledge, but I will have a a meeting set up and I'll let, you know, I'll keep the board posted on every step of the way, you know, um. But yeah, that was just recent because I just submitted the town report, not more than three weeks ago. They reviewed it and I'm like, yeah, this is missing, so.
What happens if we're not in compliance, Beth?
As a town?
Yeah.
Good question. I can find out. I will find out.
So currently we are non-compliant. Is that correct?
Right now, as far as. Right now, as far as I understand it, with that email from the state, we are, we need to, in, we need to change the bylaw or the regulations to bring it back into compliance. And that's the meeting that I'm gonna have to find out exactly what we need to do to do that. Hopefully, it's a regulation change, which can be easily done. If it's a bylaw change, it can't be done until town meeting, so.
And one would hope that anything serious from the state, that they would send a certified letter to the town administrator, not just sending an email.
Right.
Saying, guess what?
Yeah, you know, I mean, really.
Yeah, I know. I don't know what the implications are of being out of compliance, and I will definitely follow up on that.
Not to um, add to Lance's point, I do think in some state agencies, there's a little bit of bluster via email to encourage certain people or groups to do things. But probably if we were genuinely in a serious position, I would anticipate the select board would have received some level of formal notice or.
Yeah, you would hope so.
I would hope, but you never know.
Right, exactly.
But, okay, sounds good. Uh, so that is two point five. Three point one, receive from Townsend, Abudding Towns and other agencies. Harley, I don't know if you have a chance, can you view anything on your portal or?
It's nice enough to email me, uh, the two uh, um, announcements. Uh, only two tonight, and they're both from Pepperell. Uh, so I will, with your permission, I'll read them.
You, you may.
Okay, notice of public hearing, Town of Pepperell Zoning Board of Appeals. In accordance with the provisions of M G L Chapter forty-eight, Sections nine and eleven, and Sections nine, three, zero, zero, and three, three, two, zero, dash, three, three, two, six of the Town of Pepperell zoning bylaw. The zoning board of appeals will hold a remote public hearing regarding an application submitted by Aja Basili. Hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, requesting a special permit to allow a home occupation for the purpose of operating a one-chair hair salon to be located in a small studio within existing space in the residence. The subject property is located in the suburban district, suburban residence district at one oh seven Garotten Street, Pepperell, Mass, as shown on Tax Mac thirty-five parcel thirty-five dash zero, and by a deed recorded at the Middlesex House Registry of Deeds Book seven, two, two, five, five, page five, four, six. The public hearing will be held remotely on December third, twenty twenty-five at seven P M. Please see the calendar on the Town of Pepperell homepage, posted forty-eight hours prior to the public hearing for information on how to access the meeting. And that goes on with the uh, website, uh, um, uh, the, the, the Zoom um, link, et cetera. Um, written comments should be submitted on or before November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, Sean McCaffrey Chair, Zoning Board of Appeals. Okay, and.
So the next one, hit, hit on the applicant, hit on what it is, and I think that's, that'll be good.
Just the applicant, okay.
Look, applicant content, vague content, you don't need to, I don't think you need to do the Zoom stuff.
Okay, thank you. Uh, number two, zone notice of public hearing, Town of Pepperell Zoning Board of Appeals. In accordance with the provisions of M G L Chapter forty-eight, Sections six, eight, eleven, and fifteen, and Sections nine, two, two, zero, nine, two, two, one, nine, two, 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 nine, two, two, three, three, five, three, zero, and three, five, four, zero of the Town of Pepperell zoning bylaw, the zoning board appeals will hold a remote public hearing regarding three applications submitted by Pamela Brown on behalf of the subject property owners, Lisa and Michael K. Cardos. Cardos, again, I apologize if I'm not pronouncing the name correctly, an appeal of a zoning enforcement notice issued by the building commissioner regarding a carport structure erected at the subject property and requests in the alternative for a special permit or variance to allow the carport structure at the subject property to remain in place. The subject property is located in the suburban residential district at one nineteen Lowell Road, Pepperell, Massachusetts, as shown on Tax Mac seventeen, parcel thirty-nine dash zero, and by a deed recorded at the Middlesex House Registry of Deeds Book seven, two, eight, seven, two, page five, eighty. The public hearing will be held remotely on December third, twenty twenty-five at seven, twenty P M. Please see the calendar on the Town of Pepperell homepage, posted forty-eight hours prior to public hearing for information on how to assess the meeting. All written parties are invited to remotely attend the public hearing and provide oral and or written comments to this zoning board of appeals. Written comments should be submitted on or before November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Sean McCaffrey Chair, Zoning Board of Appeals, and those are the only two um, notices that I have tonight.
Thank you very much, Harley.
Thank you.
Excellent. Um, Beth, would you care to share an update for three point two, your administrative report?
Yeah, I'll just share a few highlights. Um, we've received an application for a accessory dwelling unit uh, at forty-eight West Elm. And we'll likely review that during your next meeting on December eighth. Um, and then I did put a draft planning board twenty twenty-six meeting schedule in the folder. Now you guys can take a look at that, that was your measure. Uh, everything was, it was a lot of compliance and permit. Um, just friendly reminder letters that went out, they're all listed in here. Um, and I'm following up on everything, just permit conditions and stormwater management conditions, so. Um, spend a lot of time on that. Um, and really, that's kind of it. Um, oh, thirty-five Burgess Road, I just wanted to let the board know that the decision did go through the twenty, twenty-day appeal period with no appeals filed, so they can move on. I remember there was some question last time about that, um. And I didn't know we're compliant, we're preparing the compliance update for the M V T A that's gonna get done. Um, oh, uh, the clerk did submit our articles for M V T A uh, and the multifamily overlay district to the attorney general today. And we expect to hear back, they have ninety days, so we should get a response February, mid-February on there. I expect everything to be A okay. Yeah, and I think that's kind of it. Everything else is in there, and then you already know about that anyway, when it comes to stormwater.
All right, so three point three is one oh eight Fishford Road. I did, Beth, could you give a, a quick overview of this one as well?
Sure. One foot, one week, Fishford Road is a eight-unit, um, age restricted development. And um, there are three units that are going to be built and one unit that's gonna be renovated, it's a multifamily home. He just um, called Golden Permits for the three units, the three two-family units. And um, he's got the site work complete. I did the uh, pre-construction site visit. And um, everything looks good. The only thing I noticed was um, that he didn't have the construction entrance put in, so um, I talked to his engineer and um, the um, the developer asked if they could use the turner way as their construction entrance since it's already paved. And I'll just show the board a quick picture of it. And uh, what he would like to do. This one. So it's kind of, the house is a little tilted. And that's what he has for a construction entrance, um. And the plan actually is quite different. It's like a fifty-foot entrance gravel, you know, one and a half inch stone gravel is what's supposed to be there, according to his approved plan. Uh, so I did talk to the building commissioner and his request is basically just to, to use this. This is Fishford Road, as you know, um, and you can't see the site, but it moves for the workings down here. It's all downhill from here, which is good.
Is, is this Phil?
Yes.
And is the pool still there behind the house without a fence around it?
Yeah, I don't know about the fence.
The pool is still there.
Um, that is another shot of the driveway.
It's in drive, right, it's very physical.
So um, after talking to the building commissioner about this request, I wanted to make sure I brought something to the board. So you, you, you know, you decide whether or not you want to approve his proposal or not. The building commissioner thought that he should at least have two feet of um, section of gravel, you know, that the required gravel along the driveway. Because he felt that construction trucks were not gonna make that turn and that most likely are gonna be coming right through here. So his proposal was, you know, a crushed, crushed stone along the right of way of, you know, a two, twenty-four inch uh, section of that right along the drive. And I talked to the engineer on the phone um, this afternoon right before the meeting. And uh, he is completely in agreement with that. So if the board is okay with that, um, we can start there and then um, I can monitor it, you know, stop by, it's obviously right off of Fishford Road. It's not like we're gonna see, miss anything, but if you would be interested in making a motion to, you know, agree to, to that option right now, it is a, it is a change from the approved plan, so that's why I have to bring it to you. Um, and that's why I wanted to bring it to you, but that's what I had.
So the building commissioner um, was supportive of the change?
He was comfortable with the change, and I have an email from him. I put it in here. Uh, no, that's the engineer's email, which you guys had in your portal. He says, I don't think it would hurt to put a twenty-four inch strip of crushed stone all along the edge of that driveway. Um, cause no one's gonna make that corner. So the engineer also thought it would make sense to put it along the right of way. So along Fishford Road, even though it is, you know, sloping downwards and away from Fishford Road. Cause the whole idea of the construction entrance is to keep any sedimentation from going onto the public way.
Exactly.
And the way this, this land is sloped, sloping away from Fishford Road. However, you are still gonna have construction vehicles going in and out, cause its foundations are not in yet.
The color, one foundation is already.
Yeah, he's got the permit, yes. He's got two more to put in, so. So if the board is comfortable.
About the color accents with the water.
That's right, which is.
The paved area that's there.
That's right.
And he wants to extend two feet of crushed stone?
He wants to change from the approved plan, which is a fifty-foot construction entrance of crushed stone. Uh, that's what's part of the stormwater, you know, conditions of the stormwater permit, actually. He's requesting a change to use the paved entrance. And um, the building commissioner is saying, you know, yeah, he's fine with that as long as you have that crushed stone. You know, that band of crushed stone as well, just to keep things stable. He thinks that would be sufficient. So it's up to the board. I mean, you don't have to, you know, you could ask him to put that crushed stone entrance in, but he's gonna have to put crushed stone over a paved, you know, a paved area, so that doesn't make sense. That's why he asked for the change. So if you wanna just make that motion and, and I'll monitor it and, you know, he's perfectly, I'm sure he's perfectly happy to do the.
Seems to make sense.
Yeah.
Any, any other comments from the board?
Brett, what do you think? You're pretty good at this stuff.
No, I don't, no, I don't have to call that. Whatever, whatever the building inspector.
Here, okay. Um, motion to approve the recommendation from the building inspector, looking at crushed stone within the right way. And have uh, Beth, our planning board, have them monitor as needed.
I'll let it second.
Second, Carol for the second. All those in favor? All right, may I have it? Okay, so that's three point three. Four point one, I don't know if Beth has any more to say about it, but it's the Citizen Planning Collaborative. They, I've not yet taken training. I hear they have great trainings, and they have trainings for planning boards. Otherwise, our next meeting is scheduled for December eighth and December fifteenth. And I hope you all have a happy Thanksgiving. Have a good, any motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at seven thirty-six.
Second, all in favor? There you go. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Hartley. Thank you, T Cam.